On behalf of the Town of Silver City, I'm calling this meeting of the Town Council to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and, following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zia symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. I would like to welcome everyone, and I want to acknowledge our town administration, our town manager Alex Brown, our assistant town manager Jackie O'Leary, our town attorney Charles Critic, and our business operations manager Randy Hernandez, police chief Portillo. Oh, I thought I saw the fire chief a little while ago. Oh, okay. Are you not here as the fire chief tonight?
I've been talking to him.
Okay. Well, then, how about the assistant fire chief Aaron Severs? And I'd like to welcome all members of the press, as well as members of the public. Thank you all for being here tonight. First item on the agenda is changes to the agenda. Does anyone want to make changes?
Me.
Counselor Prince?
I move that we table the approval of the minutes. Item number six, letter A, until we can all receive and review the minutes from the previous meeting until our next meeting.
Is there a second?
All seats.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is ceremonies. First is the Silver City Employee of the Month for June is Luis Raza Navra. Are you here? Will you come up to the podium? And will those who are going to help in the presentation of the award also meet him at the podium?
Is this on? No, it's on. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Aaron Severs, the assistant chief with the Town of Silver City, the Fire Department. And I received a letter from one of our fire lieutenants. I then submitted that to the group that decides on this award. I'd like to read that letter, if that's okay. This is a letter from Lieutenant Paul Ortiz. I am pleased to recommend engineer Luis Raza for Employee of the Month. Engineer Raza has demonstrated himself to be an invaluable asset to the Silver City Fire Department through his dedication, hard work, and extensive knowledge. He consistently strives to advance his career in the fire service and sets a commendable example for future firefighters. Luis does not seek recognition. He performs his duties diligently and frequently goes above and beyond by undertaking projects that might otherwise go unnoticed. He has exhibited exceptional initiative by completing paramedic school to become a certified paramedic and achieving Rope Rescue Technician Level Two certification. Additionally, Luis has taken on an officer's role in managing our pharmaceuticals, significantly transforming how our medications are accounted for. And furthermore, he earned an associate's degree in electrical technology from W N M U. Luis consistently demonstrates his willingness to teach and train others with enthusiasm. His commitment to professional development and support for his colleagues enhances our department's capabilities and morale. In my view, it is high time that Luis receives recognition for his accomplishments and exemplary work ethic. He has earned the respect and admiration of his officers and line personnel. I kindly request that you consider him for this well-deserved recognition. Thank you.
The next Silver City Employee of the Month is for July, is Julian Menos. Come on up. Is he here?
He's not here, but Randy will read it.
He is.
Okay. You'll give it to him, Randy. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This nomination was submitted by Robert Esqueta, the Utilities Director, and was ultimately selected for July Employee of the Month. So Robert Esqueta would like to nominate Julian Menos, the wastewater treatment plant operator for Employee of the Month. Julian regularly comes into work, is always willing to work overtime, and volunteers to work holidays as needed. In addition, Julian regularly goes above and beyond his normal work duties to ensure that the wastewater treatment plant is operational. Julian will take it upon himself to contact equipment representatives or vendors when issues arise at the plant that need additional assistance to either resolve issues or make repairs. Julian is also constantly striving to increase his knowledge in the operation and maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant by visiting other plants around the state on his personal signature. This results in him returning with recommendations and suggestions on how to improve the operation and maintenance of the plant. So congratulations to Julian for July 2025 Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Next is item number four, proclamations. And we have no proclamations tonight. Next is item number five, council comments. First on the list tonight will be Counselor Snyder. He will be followed by Counselor Prince, and then Counselor Kano, and then Counselor Ben Como.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Nothing. Counselor Prince?
You're coming this evening.
Counselor Kano?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I just want to share with the council that I just returned from the advanced molly class that was held last week in Albuquerque. It was more informative than normal, so I would suggest if people are interested in more training that that class is always available and it gets better and better every time. For me, the most important things that I learned was I learned a lot about when a community can and cannot give money to nonprofits, which I'm sure is going to come up again shortly. And also, probably the best training we got was from former state police chief Tim Johnson, who talked about how councils should be working with their police officers and their police departments. I think that was really helpful for me. I know I had a meeting with Chief Portillo this morning and talked about a few things that I didn't know about, and then I gave him a couple of ideas that we're going to see if they work for the community, so be looking for those. The other thing I wanted to do was to yet again invite everyone to the community conversations that are being held. These are in conjunction with the Town of Silver City, the Silver City Theater Group, New Mexico State University, Western New Mexico University, the Daily Press, and I'm missing one, oh, and the Silver City Museum. The first conversation will be held this Saturday at two o'clock at the Global Resource Center Auditorium on Western Campus. This one will be called A Seat at the Table: Chicano Involvement in Local Governments, and it will feature speakers, Land Commissioner Stephanie Garcia Richard, former county assessor Awut Durieta, Council of Governments Executive Director Priscilla Lucero, and our own town manager Alex Brown, and I will be the moderator. So I hope everyone joins us. There will be refreshments afterwards and a great conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ben Como?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much to say, other than I know that we're going to have the Tausno Moss event this coming Saturday. I've had a number of people reach out to me about the memory cemetery lane of some of the cemeteries. So I would encourage people that do come out to, you know, pick up trash, that they work on cemeteries, work on plots, I would encourage if you're working on a plot, if you see some weeds next to that plot, if it's not too much, doesn't take too much effort if you would clean that also. And on a positive note, although the recreation center is not open right now, it's been nice driving by and seeing kids playing the outdoor playground set. I've actually talked to a couple of them, and they have said that they're really excited, they're enjoying it, they can't wait till it officially opens. So anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. I would like to support Counselor Ben Como's comments and ask if you will pick up one of these on your way out. It's the details about the pick-it-up and Tausno Moss event this Saturday. And while I'm saying that, I would like to thank Allison Civic and Alicia Hallmark for all of their work in putting these things together and supervising them. So thank you for your support. Recently, an editorial in the Silver City Daily Press, written by publisher and owner Nicholas Seibl, revealed that the paper's having a few financial challenges. It was, to my way of thinking, a call for our community to step up and help. I have lived in this community for almost 50 years and have experienced the daily press in several incarnations under previous ownership. Under the ownership and leadership and direction of Nick Seibl, our local newspaper has reached a newer, higher level of community coverage and local news reporting than it has ever seen before. While some previous editors and publishers relied heavily on wire content to fill up its pages, the current regime has transformed the paper and greatly increased the amount of local content and employed local reporters and columnists to do so. Inside the Daily Press, in addition to its own high-quality editorials, the paper has given a wide-read form to several insightful and thought-provoking local columnists and regularly runs letters to the editor on all sides of any given issue written by local readers. Local and school sports are a big part of life in a small town, and the press gives generous coverage to a wide spectrum of sporting events, giving support, acknowledgement to local athletes of all ages. Local writers and columnists provide content on wide-ranging subjects for organic homesteading to the latest in high-tech advancements for businesses. The Daily Press, of course, covers meetings of local governments like this meeting. I would be remiss if I didn't also thank the Grand County Beat for its extensive coverage of news and events in Grand County. Go to any festival or other community events, and you will see Mary Alice Murphy taking notes or walking around taking photographs for her online newspaper. I would also like to encourage our community members to shop locally. There's a lot of our local businesses that are having some difficulty, and so I think we owe it to our local businesses to support them in any way we can, as well as supporting our newspaper and online newspaper in any way we can. As community members, let us all evaluate ways in which we can support these particular issues. Next on the agenda is six, approval of the minutes, but we made a motion to move that to the next council meeting. Next is public comment. See that seven people have signed up. First on the list is Delphina Jimenez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Chief Portillo, Mr. Alex Brown. I'm mostly here because at the last meeting I attended, I was really upset with the lady who got up out of protocol, came to the podium and spoke when she was not called upon. And I think that was very disrespectful, it was rude, and it was not called for. And I think that it would be nice if somehow, Mr. Mayor, you would get a toggle switch or something up there, so that when people do that, you can turn it off and they cannot speak. Also, after five minutes, you can also turn it off. If they're going to be rude to talk after five minutes, they shouldn't be heard. And that's all I want to say, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is Daniel Durant.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Durant-Pais. Yesterday, our national leader declared that he is going to militarize law enforcement in Washington, D.C. He is also threatening to send in the National Guard to places like New York, Chicago, and L.A. Of course, there's our cities in blue states. He doesn't mention places like St. Louis or Little Rock, which have similar crime rates. But there are in red states. A couple of months ago, the feds did a sweep of MacArthur Park in Los Angeles, and when pressed, the government admitted there was no law enforcement reason, it was just a show of force meant to intimidate people. We also have 10,000-plus new ICE agents to be set loose on the population. 10,000 poorly-trained masked people that are being actually recruited, mostly in right-wing media. If you think the camps are just for immigrants, you are mistaken. Change, true change, must come from the bottom and not the top. We can't count on the current Democrats in Washington to stop the monster called fascism. I am 68 years old, and have been active in politics since 1972, when I worked to elect George McGovern against Richard Nixon. That was another dark chapter in our history. I was fighting fascism then, and I'm fighting fascism now, and I will never stop. You can't be against ICE and for ICE at the same time. The people aren't morons. But there again, hypocrisy is an easy pill to swallow when you have plenty of ambition to wash it down with. For those of you that support ICE politically, you will regret it. This isn't just about ICE. This is about which path this country takes, freedom or dictatorship. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Van Busker.
Thank you. There's no way I'm going to get through this in five minutes, so I'm going to butcher this up pretty good.
Mark, could you speak?
Sure. There's no way I'm going to get through this in five minutes, so I'll probably butcher this a little bit. I'm here to talk about SPIN, because I understand that a couple of weeks ago, they were here asking for money. And I want the council to be sure to get whatever documentation you need and ask the questions you need before you consider giving them money. And I'll give you a couple of questions that I would ask. Let me step back. There are several websites that, well, part of the trade-off with being a nonprofit is that you have to make your tax returns public. So there are websites that go and download tax returns and then upload them to their websites. I use two different websites, they have the same tax returns. In 2023, SPIN had $43,000 in travel expenses. And that's, looking at the tax return, that seems to be related to program services revenue, which I think Mr. Bobby Shaw said that that's, in response to your question, Mr. Mayor, that that's where they are bringing people from other cities and other counties into Silver City to provide services. In 2022, there's a line item on the tax return for compensation of directors, officers, and key employees. It indicates that there was $500,566 paid. So if SPIN did pay over half a million dollars to their directors, officers, or key employees, I would ask, did the board of directors approve them? Who did they pay it to? And what's the justification for paying a half a million dollars to their officers or employees? Likewise, in 2023, there's a line item in the return for management fees paid to non-employees. And that amount indicated was paid was $528,000. And so, again, if SPIN paid $528,000 to someone for a management fee who's not an employee or even is an employee, I would ask the same three questions. Did the board of directors approve it? Who did they pay over half a million dollars to in that one year? And the justification for paying that amount? And I just, I'm probably up on my moments, but I also wanted to let you know that the tax returns indicate for 2023, and 2024 is not available yet, but for 2023, the tax returns indicated that SPIN had $1.251 million in revenue. One million, two hundred, a million and a quarter dollars worth of revenue. So I would suggest that the council get their tax returns. You can ask them, they're obligated under the Internal Revenue Code to provide them to you. If they don't, I would contact the IRS and let them know that a nonprofit isn't complying with the tax code. Once you get the tax returns, I would go through them, look at them, ask some serious questions before you consider giving any of the town's money to an organization that's pulling in over a million and a quarter dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Simon Wheaton Schwerf.
Mayor, councilors, reason I'm here tonight, well, this reason, anyway, is one of our commissioners is up for reinstatement, Commissioner Moody, who is unavailable tonight, unfortunately. So I wanted to speak on her behalf. She's been on the commission now for a while. She has a very good background in education, which means that she's very good at listening, reading, and asking questions. And since her very first appearance on the commission, she has asked very good, deep-searching questions, short, but to the point. And she works very well with the entire commission. So I'm just encouraging you to renew her appointment on planning and zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Holly Noonan.
Hi there. My name is Holly. I'm the executive director of the Crook and Forest Institute, and I just wanted to share some thoughts about why, in my opinion, this city needs a community land trust, and that's true of a lot of municipalities around the country, but in our case, I just wanted to read a few notes from the National League of Cities. They have an article called "What City Leaders Need to Know About Community Land Trust." There's just five points I wanted to go over real quick. One is that CLTs leverage a one-time investment to deliver long-term benefits. In most affordable housing programs, there tends to be a series of subsidies, and affordable housing can become liabilities that require more subsidies. But in a community land trust setting, affordable housing is a one-time investment that is perpetually affordable, in perpetuity. And for that reason, it really needs to be examined carefully. Community land trusts acquire land, they can also develop and rehabilitate housing and sell it as affordable housing. They also limit the price of appreciation, they're taking it out of the market rate forces and doing a resale formula so that this housing doesn't ever go to market rate, which is how it can remain affordable in perpetuity. So while the homes on a community land trust can be bought and sold, they can only be sold to another low-income family when they are sold. Second is CLTs directly address the growing affordability gap in housing. As we all know, there's a massive housing crisis in this country and in this state. One recent study showed that shared equity homeownership programs, including community land trusts, provide housing that's available. 95% of the homes were affordable for the demographic of people who are making 80% AMI or lower. AMI is average median income, so we're talking about people who are moderate and low-income. 95% of the housing in community land trusts is affordable for this population, this demographic. CLTs can also be a powerful wealth-building tool. In the situation that we find ourselves in, white households have net worth that is seven times higher than Hispanic and Latino households in this country. Community land trusts are one of the ways that we can rectify this imbalance. Cities can work to expand opportunities for shared equity ownership among Black, Latino, Asian, and Indigenous households by supporting shared equity programs in targeted neighborhoods and removing common barriers to homeownership. The fourth is that CLTs can help communities resist gentrification and displacement. We all know what happened in Taos and Santa Fe, and if we would like it to not happen in Silver City, we need to be proactive about it now, and community land trusts are one of the ways that we can do that. The fifth one is that CLTs enable communities to better weather economic downturns. So in the economic crisis of 2008, CLT homeowners were much, much less likely to move, and they were 10 times less likely to go into foreclosure. So it's a safety net for the lower-income demographic. Every city needs one, and our city needs one. Thank you for listening.
Next is Joanne DeMichael.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, town administration. My name is Joanne DeMichael, and I'm a proud citizen of Silver City. I moved to what I thought was my death-due-us-part home in 2021. I bought a home in a manufactured home community, also known as a mobile home park. And after a few months, I received a notice that the land under my home had been sold to an out-of-town investor. I then researched what the law is in New Mexico and what else is going on in New Mexico and throughout the country, and found out that this is a crisis throughout the country, that there are, for the past 20 years, investors taking advantage of people in these communities, buying the land under people's homes, and then raising rents. Just earlier this year, there was a corporate investor, out-of-town investor, that bought the land in a community in Aztec and raised rents 80%. And on top of raising the rent, they also imposed certain rules, such as people can no longer have their animals, their pets, if they weigh more than 30 pounds. So it's a crisis that's happening, and it's affecting affordable housing. And so I'm really in support of the housing plan. And when I first saw the public notice that the public was invited to participate, I attended the early meetings, and I've sporadically attended other meetings, and I found them to be incredibly innovative and open to different options. And, you know, the one thing I would like to mention is that everybody in the world, in the country, are familiar with the affordable housing crisis. And oftentimes, what happens is money is thrown at the problem. And oftentimes, what happens is money is thrown at the problem, and new houses are built with taxpayer money or subsidized with taxpayer money, but then they don't necessarily stay affordable. So one of the things, such as a community land trust, resident-owned manufactured home communities, there are other ways of making sure that when we protect and preserve the affordable housing that we already have, that we are saving ourselves a crisis in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is number eight, reports, uh, from our town manager.
Uh, Mayor and Council, after thirty-five, thirty years of service to the town of Silver City, of which twenty-five years was, has been as the city manager, and a lot of that as finance director, uh, I'm here to announce that I'll be retiring at the end of this year. It's been a pleasure serving the town, the four mayors I've worked with, the numerous , uh, town councillors. The town councils have always been very diverse, just like our community. Even though they, they had their differences, they always, always worked together out of respect for each other and the people they represented. It, it always took just working together and talking. I've attended just under six hundred town council meetings. But not until last council meeting did that change the respect. When Councilors Prince and Snyder decided to make a mockery of the council, our community, our staff. It's sad that that had to happen, and, um, I won't be a part of it. Thank you.
Next is item number nine, public hearing. Public hearing, ZC 25-01. I would like to, uh, say that Mr. Brown has left, so representing the city administration now will be Assistant Town Manager Jackie O'Leary. We will have public hearing, ZC 25-01. Zone change request for one tract of land from commercial highway zoning to mixed-use zoning district. The property is legally described as subdivision Moores Number Four, Lot 13 through Lot 15, East Five Minutes of Lot 15, point two four one acres, addressed as 2240 Pino Salto's Road. The applicant is Kent Allen Kelly, represented by Aaron Palmer, Century Twenty-One, Hacienda Realty. The town council will serve as the hearing board, and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had any exporte, exporte conversations with anyone even indirectly related to this matter? For the record, all council members has indicated no. Next is the swearing-in of the applicant or any person wishing to make a statement. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning or will be attending by phone, please rise, in this case, to be sworn in by the town clerk.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I am about to give?
That the testimony that I am about to give?
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council?
Is the truth?
Is the truth?
The whole truth?
The whole truth?
And nothing but the truth?
And nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury.
Ms. O'Leary, uh, Jackie, uh, so the two people that are attending by phone, have they been sworn?
Mr. Kent Kelly? Will you please be sworn in for the record?
Yes.
If you would repeat after me. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Mr. Kelly.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That the testimony I am about to give?
The testimony I am about to give?
In this matter before this council?
Uh, say again, I'm sorry?
In the matter before the council?
Uh, in, in this matter before council?
Is it truth?
It's true?
The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
The whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury.
Thank you. Only those three people who have, two people who have been sworn will be permitted to participate in this hearing. The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff, Jackie O'Leary, the proponent, shall present a brief synopsis of the matter being brought before the town council. Next will come the, any other witness that has been sworn in. The staff and witness for the town may then be questioned by the hearing board and the presiding officer. At the end of all testimony for the town, the presiding officer will then ask the proponent if that concludes his or her case in chief, and that the proponent and his or her witness should remain available for further questioning, if necessary, by the hearing board, or by the opponents to this town cau, uh, case. Following the close of the proponent's case, the respondent and any witness in support of the respondent shall then testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness, but such questions will be made through the presiding officer. We will now begin to begin the public hearing. First will be the town's case. Will the town staff, Ms. O'Leary, please come forward? Or you could do that from where you're sitting would be fun, and proceed to present the substance of your case to the council.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. I'll recite the staff report into the record. On May 20th, 2025, Kent Kelly completed an application for a zone change for the subject property. The subject site is a 0.241 acre lot with a single-family home built in 1948. The current zoning of the property is commercial highway. According to the land use code, the land use and zoning code of 2010, section 3.1.8, the highway commercial district is intended to accommodate a broad mix of commercial uses serving residents and visitors, including businesses that are highly accessible by vehicles. This district is intended for employment activities and uses that may be more intense than the commercial historic downtown district and light commercial districts that create, in the creation of traffic, noise, and lights. Higher-density residential buildings and mixed-use buildings containing residential units that do not front the highway are appropriate. Previously, the land use and zoning code of 1960 did not restrict single-family residential uses in the commercial zone. Section 4, Commercial Zone, the following regulations apply to the commercial zone. A, Use. Property in the commercial zone may be used for any use permitted in the residential zones. An amendment was made by ordinance 1630 in 1978 to restrict the construction of new one- and two-family dwellings within the commercial zone. In the land use code of 1999, the verbiage pertaining to the residential uses in the commercial zone was removed and replaced with the use table 3.2. The use table, section 3.2, displayed single-family residential and duplexes as prohibited uses within the commercial zone. The use of household living in a single-family detached home in the commercial highway zone is not allowed based on the land use code of 2010, section 3.2, use table. Since the home was constructed prior to the adoption of the 2010 code, the home is considered a nonconformity and regulated by Article 7. Article 7, section 7.1.1, states, "Any lawfully occupying, any lawful use occupying a building or land on the effective date of this land use code or of subsequent amendments to it that does not conform to the regulations of the land use code as adopted or amended, or which is not specifically addressed in the land use code, shall be deemed a nonconforming use and may be continued. And the right to engage in such shall run with the land, subject to the conditions of this article. No changes in type, scale, intensity, or use are permitted except those resulting in conformity of use." Article 7, section 7.6, abandonment or discontinuance of nonconforming uses or buildings, states, "When a nonconforming use is discontinued for a consecutive period of one year, the property involved may thereafter only be used for conforming purposes. If, if the home at 2240 Pino Salto's Road becomes uninhabited for more than one year, the property could no longer be used as a single-family residence." The Town of Silver City Comprehensive Plan of 2017, pages 3 through 24, C, Development Regulations and Zoning. The town should coordinate land use and community design goals with the goals of, and other planning elements such as housing, community design, transportation, and economic development. The town's development regulations shall reflect the integrative approach of planning, ensuring all new development has a beneficial influence to the quality of life and improve future opportunities for the community. The zoning map should be updated to reflect all categories and current uses. Individual amendments to the official zoning map on a case-by-case basis, like this request, provide the town and its residents some flexibility in meeting the long-term goals of the land use and zoning code of 2010. Based on the objectives of the comprehensive plan in the land use code, the town hopes to align the official zoning map with the land use code and comprehensive plan, property owner's wishes, and the way that the town has grown and developed. By amending the official zoning map to mixed use of the subject property, the town would be moving the property into conformity and allowing the single-family residential to run with the land. The mixed-use zone can also accommodate small-scale commercial, including doctors' offices, clinics, and restaurants, like the restaurant located across the street to the north, or other commercial uses, including grocery stores and general retail. After a departmental review of the application, the code enforcement utilities, fire, police, public works, engineering, and meter division had no comment. As required by section 6.2.11 of the land use code of 2010, the community development department contacted 20 property owners as identified by the Grant County Assessor Parcel Data within 300 feet of the affected area by U.S. mail regarding the proposed zone change. Two responses were received during the citizen participation process. One respondent requested clarification on what the application was asking for. The other respondent asked if the zone change would affect the taxes on the property. Ms. O'Leary stated that the change only affects the subject property, and as of today, another individual reached out regarding about the process of the zone change, so I informed them of such. When the council makes a decision about their request at hand, it shall, at minimum, make at least one of the following findings. The proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment shall not adversely affect the implementations and goals of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is justified in order to correct a mistake of the town's comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment will not adversely impact public health, safety, or general welfare and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. And the proposed amendment responds to changing in conditions such as in assumptions on capital investments, road locations, population trends, lands committed for development, density, and other further studies that have been completed since the adoption of the land use code. The proposed amendment is necessary in order to respond to state and/or federal legislation. The proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code. It is the recommendation of the community development department and the Town of Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend the map amendment slash zone change to the Town of Silver City Town Council, based on the following findings. One, the proposed amendment is in substantial compliance with the town's comprehensive plan. These are direct quotes from the town's comprehensive plan. Success depends on the town creating conditions for more and better development within the town. A successful infill strategy will support the creation of livable neighborhoods and communities. Accomplishments of the 2024, or 2004 Comprehensive Plan, mixed-use zoning enabled infill development. Goal one, prioritize safe housing for residents in Silver City. Policy, to ensure the town of Silver City pursues all avenues for mixed, for a mixture of fair, affordable housing for all income levels. Number two, the proposed amendment does not adversely affect the implementation of the goals and policies of the town's comprehensive plan. The change does not constitute a spot zoning since the mixed-use zone regulations comply and are consistent with the surrounding residential and commercial uses. Number four, the proposed amendment will not adversely impact public health, safety, or general welfare and will promote the original purposes of the land use code. And number seven, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of the land use code without lowering the standards of the land use code.
Thank you. Do you have any other witnesses you want to call?
Yes, Mayor, the applicant is also on the line, if you all have any questions for him.
Any questions?
Mr. Kelly, would you like to present your case?
Absolutely. Absolutely, I'd like all three of your time and consideration in this matter. And I'd like to tell you, I think this variant would not adversely affect the implementation of goals and policies of the town comprehensive plan. This, uh, on page 16 of the, uh, the town comprehensive plan, it talks about mixed-use definitions. It adds, uh, a little work opportunity to often being located in central business districts, but also in other places in residential areas around there. On, uh, page 22, it talks about infill opportunities, just taking advantage of undeveloped or underdeveloped spaces in order to, uh, be able to bring new opportunities to town. I think this place definitely falls in that comprehensive, in that category, being on a, a busy street, being having an oversized lot, it could definitely accommodate something like that. On page 53 of the, uh, of the, uh, plan, it talks about, page, uh, March 17, there are 813 businesses registered with the Town of Silver City Utility Billing Department. Many businesses in Silver City are small owner-operator businesses comprised of lower or more members of a stable house school. So, uh, once again, as far as the work opportunity goes, this place, uh, I think really fits the bill. It could be a, a great deal. Page number, uh, 33 and 35, the town comprehensive plan also talks about the need for quality affordable housing, both for rent and for sale. And, uh, with, uh, with this zoning variant, uh, this would make this property more affordable, requiring a lower down payment, and it could be, uh, a great workable opportunity at entry-level price, and, and also being very nice residence. This place has been a residence in the forties, as many of the others in the neighborhood. Me can use it more accurately to describe what it currently is, and, uh, and it would also provide the opportunity for new business growth. Uh, I guess that's why I think this, this property is, would, would be in total compliance with the town's plan and as far as, uh, implementing the goals and policies. Um, I appreciate you taking time to hear the points and, and your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, we would ask for, uh, any other comments, but since we only had two people sworn in, those two people have already testified. So I'll ask the council if anybody has any questions for the, uh, for, uh, Ms. O'Leary or for the, uh, other witness. Councilor Prince?
I just wanted to confirm, have we had this reviewed by planning and zoning and received a recommendation?
Mayor, Councilor Prince, yes. So, uh, planning and zoning did offer their formal, uh, recommendation to the council from the meeting that was held in July, I believe.
Okay. And did, uh, they have a vote on it, or was it, uh, just going to be text comment?
It was, uh, a vote, and it was unanimous.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Also, we would usually about now ask if anyone was opposed to this zone change, but again, since there were only two witnesses sworn in and they have already spoken support, we will skip that part, and I will call for, I will ask the hearing board if you're prepared to render your decision. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Kano?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of ZC 25-01, zone change request for one tract of land from commercial highway zoning to mixed-use zoning district. The property is legally described as subdivision Moores Number Four, Lot 13 through Lot 15E, five degrees of Lot 15, zero dot two four one AC, addressed as 2240 Pino Salto's Road. The applicant is Kent Allen Kelly, just represented by Aaron Palmer, Century Twenty-One, Hacienda Realty, with the finding, and I only need to read one, right? That's how it usually is, okay. Um, I'm gonna go with, um, the proposal, the pro- I'm going to go with the proposal, the proposed amendment provides additional flexibility in meeting the objectives of this Land Use Code without lowering the standards of the Land Use Code.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Counsel Snyder?
A second.
Are there any further discussion or comments from the council? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counsel Ben Colmo.
Aye.
Counsel Prince.
Aye.
Counsel Snyder.
Aye.
Counsel Connaught.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next is Agenda Item Ten, Unfinished Business, and we have no unfinished business tonight. Next is Agenda Item Eleven, New Business. Next, under Agenda Item eleven A, is the approval slash disapproval of a special dispensary permit for the Carnatus Musica Emas Festival on August twenty-nine through thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-five, with alcohol served on August twenty-nine from five P.M. to eight thirty P.M., August thirtieth from twelve P.M. to nine forty-five P.M., and August thirty-one from twelve P.M. to five thirty P.M. at twelve oh one North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, Q Southern Bistro, license number D I S dash zero zero one two nine two, one oh one East College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, eight eight oh six one. Mr. Cantana?
Hi. So we are just asking for the approval of this fiesta that's been going on for, I believe this is the seventh year. We're located there, right there where the basketball courts are. Everything goes smoothly, and we have help from the local municipality, as far as like the city police, the sheriff, and then we get our own security to be walking around, making sure that everybody's safe and having fun and getting food and listening to good music, and we're doing it with Jose Rey, and he's the one that put it all together. So we're just asking for approval of the liquor license.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion? Counsel Ben Colmo.
Mayor, I move to approve a special dispensary permit for the Carnitas Musica Emas Festival on August twenty-nine through thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, with alcohol served on August twenty-ninth from five P.M. to eight thirty P.M., August thirtieth from twelve P.M. to nine forty-five P.M., and August thirty-first from twelve P.M. to five thirty P.M. at twelve oh one North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license one, Q Southern Bristo, license.
Your call has been forwarded.
Number D I S dash zero zero one two nine two, one oh one East College Avenue, Silver City, New Mexico, eight eight oh six one.
Thank you, Counsel Ben Colmo. Is there a second? Counsel Prince?
Second, the motion is stated.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next is Agenda Item eleven B, the mayor's reappointment to the cemetery board. We have received an application from Paul Baca for reappointment to the cemetery board. Earlier, before this matter came to the council several council meetings ago, there was a issue raised about Mr. Baca's attendance at the cemetery board meetings, as well as possible conflict of interest. I then asked the chair, so I decided to do some follow-up and to do some research, and I did that. And I asked the chair of the cemetery board about his attendance at meetings and received the letter, including in your meeting packet, from the chair, Dr. Tuanis Sparks. And I'll read that letter. This letter is in support of the reappointment of Mr. Paul Baca to the Town of Silver City Cemetery Board. I have been on the board for about six years, and he preceded me by many more. He has served very well as vice president my entire tenure. His professionalism and experience are invaluable. He brings exceptional knowledge about the laws and finances regarding burials and cemeteries, and the other members of the board consult him on related matters, saving us time. He has creative solutions to landscaping problems and plot arrangement. He has been instrumental in making the new section beautifully organized and easier to maintain. His attendance is stellar, having missed only two meetings in the last two years. These absences were excused as he was performing funerals. I can wholeheartedly endorse his continued service on the board. He is a pleasure to work with. Regarding the matter of conflict of interest, I asked our town attorney if he would research this matter and send me a response, and he did. And I think all council members have a copy of that response. His concluding remarks were, my conclusion is that the appointment of Mr. Baca does not create any legally disqualifying conflicts of interest that would prevent him from serving. He does, however, it does, however, raise concerns and potential conflicts of interest that need to be monitored, should he be reappointed. In small towns and rural communities, it is difficult to find citizens interested in volunteering their time to assist in governance, and arguably, knowledge of the topic or interest in which they're involved is more beneficial than having a person with no knowledge, experience, or interest. Ultimately, your level of comfort and that of the council with those concerns and the potential experience of impropriety should be given whether to proceed with the reappointment. And then, I received another letter from the chair of the committee, Dr. Tuanis Sparks. This letter is in support of the reappointment of Mr. Paul Baca to the Town of Silver City I think I didn't include her second letter, but in that second letter, she did express strong support for his support, for his appointment to the cemetery board. So unless there are objections, I would like to reappoint Paul Baca to the cemetery board. Are there any objections?
Mr. Mayor, no objection, just question?
Pardon?
Question?
Yes.
Just wanted to check in, we have Mr. Kretic with us this evening. When it comes to monitoring, presumably the same rules that we have for the Open Meetings Act and Keeping of Records with the Town of Silver City here is available underneath the State's Inspection and Public Records Act?
That's correct.
And then just checking in with Clerk Sadeo, for the committee, for the cemetery board committee, do we have their email addresses underneath the city SharePoint Communication System?
I only have it in, well, no, yes, you do. Yes, it should be there.
Perfect. Just wanted to make sure that we have the mechanisms for oversight. Thank you.
In addition to those two letters, one of our council members, Counsel Ben Colmo, is the council member that has been assigned to the cemetery board. Counsel Ben Colmo, would you like to make any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been on the cemetery board that you assigned me for almost two years, and we meet quarterly, and we discuss how to make improvements to the cemetery. And on occasion, Paul has been made himself available when there's questions that we don't understand when it comes to funeral, burials, and so forth. So I think he's, it's nice to have him on that committee. I feel really comfortable. He's missed a couple of meetings, but we all understand on that board that he may be busy attending a funeral. I myself have missed one meeting, and I think there was a meeting that was canceled because there were some board members that were going to be out of town. But I truly feel like he's an asset. I think there was a letter that said that it's not very often that we get people that will step up and volunteer, especially a funeral director. So I'm totally in support with him, have no issues with him, but he's been very helpful. I would like to see him reappointed.
Thank you. If there are no objections, I would like to reappoint Paul Baca to the cemetery board. Seeing or hearing no objections, I hereby reappoint him to the cemetery board. Next is Agenda Item eleven C, the mayor's reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have received an application from Susan Moody for reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. As you have read in the recommendation letter from the chair of the commission, Simon Wheaton Smith, she has been a very valuable member of the commission. And would you like to make any comments, Mr. Wheaton Smith?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Could you hold the microphone?
Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, other than what I mentioned earlier, I think she works incredibly well with the team. Oh, there we go. More lights to turn on. As I mentioned before, she works incredibly well with the team, and she asks and asks questions that cause us to consider within ourselves various points, and she's been very helpful. As you know, we've been working now on the Land Use Code rewrite, and although she joined after we were partially through it, again, has been very, very helpful. So I strongly recommend her to be reappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree totally with his reappointment, and unless there are any objections, I would like to reappoint him. Any objections? Or reappoint her? Any objections? Hearing or seeing no objections, I hereby appoint Susan Moody to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next is Agenda Item eleven D, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution to adopt the two thousand and twenty-five Strategic Plan by the Silver City Town Council. Ms. Alea?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel. In your packet, you will see the draft of the Housing and Strategic Plan. This has gone through a level of public input. We have been working with the consultant site Southwest, Carlos Gamora, and he is on the line if you have any questions or any edits to the plan. Chairman Wheaton Smith, if you would like to say a few words about the process that we have done? Thank you.
I'm getting to know the ways of the podium, I haven't got the right switch on. Mayor Counsel, we've been working with the consultant site Southwest for quite a long time now. Little bit of history, in two thousand and twenty-three, one of our commissioners asked an innocuous question, how about AEDUs, accessory dwelling units? When we moved into two thousand and twenty-four, and I became the chair, I said, what's the deal? And the commissioner said, it's really about affordability. And so that's how we got involved in looking at the Land Use Code. There's a lot of fat in there, there are inconsistencies, and we have to work through them. And we've been doing this for a year and a half now. Concurrent with that, Counselors Prince and Snyder were asked by the town to get involved in the housing plan. The housing plan is really an enabling plan, rather than a plan that you follow step by step. And I think a couple of its key points have already happened. One of them is, of course, the state approving it. And the other one is it lays the foundation for what planning and zoning will be recommending as we move forward into rewriting the code. It's taken a lot of time, and in our discussions, what we've decided to do is, rather than try and rewrite the whole plan, we have a different idea. We've picked the most critical elements that we think are least controversial, that are going to achieve positive results. We're also going to amend our rules of procedure so that in January, when we do the Open Meetings Act and the officer appointments, we can add something else. Each year, planning and zoning will find out from the council and community development from other sources, what are the problems we have seen, and that will be worked on during that year. Why are we doing this? It's called continuous improvement. In other words, a progressive improvement of the Land Use and Zoning Code, so that we don't go fifteen years without fixing some of these issues. I don't want to waste a lot of time on it, but there are several things that I think are important that are driving us where we're going, and we will be talking about that later in another meeting. But issues that have surfaced that we have dealt with, seniors wanting to downsize, that brings in the issue of accessory dwelling units, or small places so they can stay in their property. Building inspectors, that is a big problem, and right now, we don't have much of an answer. Manufactured homes, Joe DeMichael spoke earlier about this, and I can tell you that is a very real problem, and I have been tracking it around the country. There are some suggested solutions, some of which are better, some of which are even more better. The Land Use Code public comments have said that it's not really very good, and that it's costly. Things that we're looking at, just a very brief summary, are different ways of thinking about how to use land, especially with larger lots, and I think that's going to be very innovative. You are the only ones who can decide, and we're still working on it. But we're trying to come up with a balance of decreasing the regulation that the town has, and letting, especially in subdivisions with covenants, letting the citizens have a say to restrict what we de-restricted. I am very proud of the housing plan that we had when I last presented it to you a few months ago. I had problems with it. We all did, and you did. And I think that Carlos Gamora has done a very good job of listening to all of those issues. There are one or two typos in it which are being fixed, but I think everyone has worked very well. I have to commend Counselors Snyder and Prince for their involvement in it, and I have to commend Jackie Alea in her role in community development. Everyone has worked positively, and we've asked difficult questions. And for example, three weeks ago, in a meeting, I had an idea of where things ought to go, and Jackie Alea had a different view of where things ought to go. And we discussed it, and the end result was I changed my mind, which doesn't happen very often. So we've had very constructive debates on these matters. Thank you very much. So unfortunately, our vice chair was going to talk this evening, but she is totally unavailable at this point in time. If there's any questions, I'd gladly answer them. Otherwise, if I could turn it back to you and to our consultant. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mayor. And also, I just want to reiterate, it is a requirement by the state of New Mexico to adopt a housing strategic plan to be able to implement affordable housing initiatives. So that is also a component of this resolution that you see before you. Carlos, do you have anything to add?
I don't think I'd much add, but that was a very, very comprehensive review that you guys had, and really good introduction there. I first want to say I'm sorry I wasn't able to be there in person. I will be there next week, and so we'll be digging into some of the co-issues. But yeah, just summarizing some of the stuff that staff and the chair were talking about. This plan establishes an updated compliance with the New Mexico Form of Health Act. Page two of the document, right up to the cover page, it's already preliminarily approved by the Mortgage Finance Authority, so it does establish that compliance exactly as they've already spoken about. they've already spoken about. The document, a lot of the housing areas and recommendations that could be worked on to address affordable and accessible housing. I think that the strategies that are provided later in this document, what they do is they provide a kind of toolbox. So they provide a toolbox that intends to be a space where the community can go and start utilizing those tools to address housing based on different kinds of capacity, but that also use the data included to really understand what some of the issues are and how orient those different programs. So that's, that's how I kind of summarize the plan. And as I said, we're standing, after this, we will start working with the council more on the land use code recommendations we have. So I think I'll leave it at that, and I'll, I'll yield my opinion.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Alea? No? Are you ready for the question? Okay. Do I hear a motion? Counsel Connaught.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of Resolution twenty-two five dash twenty-seven, a resolution to adopt the twenty-two five strategic plan by the Silver City Town Council.
Thank you, is there a second? Counsel Snyder?
A second, the motion is stated.
A motion and a second, any discussion, comments? Roll call, please, Mr. Sadeo.
Counsel Bencomo.
Aye.
Counsel Prince.
Aye.
Counsel Snyder.
Aye.
Counsel Connaught.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and I want to thank you for participating in your city government, and I want to thank the city council for their preparation and the town administration for their excellent presentations tonight. Once again, thank you for all, thank you all for being here tonight. This does conclude the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? Counsel Bencomo?
A second, sir.
All those in favor, may get up and adjourn.